It's nine oh two, Tuesday, September third, twenty twenty four. Chicksaw County Board of Supervisors. Roll call in full board and Board Secretary Sheila Sheppleton. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm sorry.
Motion seconded, any further discussion?
All I can say is probably it should have, should have the name of the agreement for Nashua. Turn it over. That's what it is.
Do you have your, I don't have my copy of it.
Uh, yeah, shit. Uh, it's a C, no. Chicksaw Seeger, like improvement council.
You ready?
Yeah.
You ready Jake?
Yeah.
Alright, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion to approve the minutes for August twenty sixth, twenty twenty four.
So, under.
A second.
Motion seconded, any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm a bunch of amendment, I believe supervisor superboarded twice.
Oh, three? Wow. I didn't guess that.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Any further discussion? There are those motions?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. For now five, public comment. Public comment. Auditor Sheila Sheppleton discussed property tax statement with regards to tip.
So, I made a mistake, but I wanted to take a moment to explain what happened. The property tax statements were out on Friday, October sixteenth. And it was broad client tension that the city of New Hampton's tax incremental financing was absorbing the tax distribution. We verified with the computer system Tyler and the department management and the property tax statements that went out are correct for the taxes for the property owners. What had happened though was that the distribution for the tax authorities, namely the New Hampton's TIF, was absorbed by the New Hampton TIF and the tax, and the taxing authorities would bet. Though the department of management said that it's happened before, but the taxes were certified with the state. So, we had to contact the city of New Hampton with communications with the New Hampton, the city of New Hampton. They have requested that we keep them at their original tax asking. So, that means then all that money will come back to the county. Well, it'll stay with the county because we won't give it out to them, just what they asked for. And then it'll be reapportioned to all the taxing levies, levies within that tax district.
My only concern Sheila, I think I've tried to explain this, is that seven five, seventy eighteen. Since twenty, I, I've asked Ray to read me the number. And through the numbers, it's about twenty million dollars of tax evaluation. Minus the city's TIF, what they want, it was like two ninety, two ninety thousand. Would that have triggered a three percent growth?
Yeah, and that's what we're looking into. So, Ray and I are running numbers on Saturday. And without the rollbacks and all that stuff, we can't give you the taxable evaluation. So, that's what we're lacking.
So, if the TIF districts of New Hampton don't meet a hundred percent of their requests next time, will that throw us into the three percent growth for next budget session?
And I don't know that without the rollbacks.
Exactly, so.
And I've been reviewing and trying to figure out what went wrong so it doesn't happen again, so.
Yeah, thank you for going with Ken. Um, do you know, so, so how are they gonna break up to the other seven tax bodies, zero percent?
Well, I wasn't being, I wasn't able to get ahold of Tyler last year like I wanted to because it's property tax. But Ray and I kinda looked at, uh, we put our own together on percentages of what the tax was. And it would be broken down basically by percentages, I would assume. I, that's what Ray and I would assume, but we need to talk to Tyler to make sure.
Yeah.
That everybody would get what they, uh.
The ex, the excess that wasn't TIF. We're gonna see more money in GS and GB than anticipated.
Right.
Say, and Pioneer Cemetery, that didn't budget, so all those parcels was zero. There's like seven of them that were zero. School District, County, County Assessor, um. Yes, that will put in more revenue in GB, GB.
Right, it'll be like receiving the less of taxes.
We don't know how much, just because don't know the distribution of the leftover. That's something that needs to be worked on yet. And you won't see the numbers until maybe June of next year, just because gotta collect it first. And then this year we're back out. So, I'm gonna be sending a letter to those taxpayers, letting them know that the actual breakdown is supposed to what told them, or is that what I'm discussing?
Well, their taxes, their taxes, their budget amounts that they certified, they're gonna receive.
He's, he's saying, so, and this is why I brought up too. Those six, seven parcel that show zeros for seven tax bodies.
Uh-huh.
Um, they're not actually showing that they're giving any money to the county.
Right.
Even though for any services. So, I think your question was, are we gonna give a new statement to those six, seven hundred people to show the breakdown? I think that's hard to do.
I, I would think that would be hard to do because if you receive like double for taxes. Unless it was, you know, but it's gonna be made up in the auditor's office.
I don't know how we're gonna break it up, Dave. I, I've not gotten into that conversation yet of how much goes to the other tax bodies? And I don't know how much we're talking, three, four hundred thousand total?
Um, probably about three hundred thousand. I mean, what, my rough draft that I have is like thirty four thousand will come back to GB and about eighteen thousand left to, to supplement.
Yeah, and those are off because, hey, you gotta collect it first. And two, the breakdown of percentages. Because it was never taxed, it never showed a percent with those seven tax bodies, so. Just something to keep in mind, there's a kind of narrative TIF approach. If you know, so, that's next week's discussion.
Any more discussion on that? If not, uh, nine ten, Sheriff Brian Schalberg discussed and approved sheriff's signature on memorandum of understanding with Nashville Plainfield Community School District.
Good morning, so what I've got, I've been contacted by the school superintendent for the Nashville Plainfield School District. He's new to the district this year, he's also superintendent in Tripola. And he asked if we would be interested in entering into a memorandum of understanding and a, and a school resource officer agreements to similar to what they have in Tripola with Bremer County Sheriff's Office. I explained to him that I'd love to enter an agreement, but I can't do more flexible than Bremer County is. Bremer County has a dedicated school resource officer that goes through all its schools in Bremer County except for, we, we've got, they have their own. So, we agreed that we could be a lot more flexible and not be as, as strict as, as Bremer County has it. And it's just, it's gonna get us into schools a lot more. It's always been a goal of mine to, I'd love to have a school resource officer dedicated like Bremer does. Unfortunately, we just don't have the staff resources to do that right now. Hopefully, this is a step in the right direction to get us to that point. If not, get us in the schools a lot more, interact with the students. We're not gonna have a per se curriculum that we're gonna be teaching as far as Derek, or anything like that. It's possible it could work into something like that. And I don't wanna get into specifics in here, but we need to know how often we're gonna be in the schools and when, and certain days and times. But it's gonna be flexible, we're gonna utilize all the staff at my office. Get in there, interact with the students, be seen more, interact with the faculty and administration as well. Be seen at more sporting events, just, just be there. And that's kinda like, just what they want, uh, I mean, they, Nashville Plainfield School District kinda wants, does benefit them, to show the state they have twenty eighty on file for sharing agreement and so on. So, um, the Nashville Plainfield School District Board did approve this. Um, I'd like to have them approve first, just to make sure that they're on board with things for a brand in front of us for it.
Coming through Schalberg.
Yeah.
You said twenty eighty agreement, this is not twenty eighty, or is it?
It'll be filed with the state like that. He sent me exactly what they have with, with Tripola, I've gone on the state's website and, and some of them recall twenty eighty, some of them recall sharing agreements.
And this was an MOU?
It is MOU, not just more kind of our office and such, kinda lay out kind of the expectation we received for going, define some things. I feel the one that I've filed with the state would be the school resource officer agreement. Lace things out and they are willing to reimburse us throughout the cost of three thousand dollars annually from the district to our office, so come back. This is being where I can spend more time in there. I felt that was a good number to start with and see if it could grow us from there and where we're at. And we do have an agreement to revisit this annually to see if this is the, wanna keep going, wanna add more to it.
Can you share what Bremer County has for a month?
I believe each district down there pays five thousand, each district, from what I understand.
So, they have more staff at the schools?
Correct, so they've got, not each district has their own dedicated officer or deputy down there, but one deputy is dedicated and has his specific school resource officer. So, and they do have curriculum that he does teach inside the districts as well, so. That's why we felt with this, we're not gonna dedicate that kinda right now. And he was, superintendent was on board as well as the, as the board, board of education down there, school board. To start with this number and reevaluate us as, once this, this year is done.
I might, might you send some, you know, one number guy, I mean, we tried to national, what, seventy five bucks an hour?
Correct.
You take that in mind by three thousand, it's only forty hours.
Correct.
Per year.
Yeah, that's kinda how I did it, because I, you know, it could be more, it could be, you know, I don't, it could be less. I figured if we get in those schools one hour a week, about four weeks, that's kinda how I use, I use that, that, that hour's wage we generally charge the same.
Yeah, fair enough.
Yeah, yeah. And we do spend more time in these cities than we'll be usually charged for, so. That's kinda how, like, forty weeks of school year, give or take some time here and there, that's kinda how I figured it out.
Um, there's no spot for the chair signing off, so.
And that's, and we can add that, I did put that in my.
It's on the table. And you have this idea?
Correct, I did, I wanna see what those four thoughts were.
No, I think it's a good thing, it's just.
If we wanna add a spot for, for chair, we can.
Over to David, let's look at this.
Yes.
Since we are the host county, with our county sheriff's department, is there any way to, since the building in Chicksaw County, that's the gray area, I guess? Cause we all know Nashville Plainfield probably has three hundred and forty county residents.
Correct.
In this building.
Mm-hmm.
Tripola probably be all Bremer County residents.
Yeah, and it's safe, it kinda was summer threat, we've got two buildings here that got two in summer. We, we all had discussions with the superintendent too as well, just so me and our county take care of friends for the buildings.
I hate to say it, but I think it's needed in the schools.
Yeah, that's a goal, I'd like to, give as much time as we can to these places and.
I did read it, Schalberg, that you're gonna be uniformed?
Yes, yes, you won't be, no, we'll be, be uniformed, so it can be myself, it can be down there, it could be Zach, it could be, you know, guys working, you know, second, third shifts. Hop in for an event, whether it be sporting event, uh, you know, recital, some sort, a band concert, whatever it might be. And they're, for example, wants to be there.
I just advise, look at the numbers next year.
Based on what they're coming up with? Yes, yep, the thing we thought this is a good baseline to get started with.
And just for budget reasons, if this will affect the budget, you're just gonna bring this in on revenue and then?
Yes.
Don't get a budget on it.
Correct, no, no, it's, we're gonna utilize staffs already on shift, these types of things.
I'll make a motion to approve the MOUs with Nashville Plainfield Community School District and authorize Chair Simeon.
Motion seconded, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Discuss approved sheriff's signature on school resource officer agreement with Nashville Plainfield Community School.
Like you said, this will be filed with the state then?
Yes.
Looks like they will soon, so we need to cover it maybe. I'll move to authorize, I'll move to authorize Chair to sign the school resource officer agreement with the Nashville Plainfield CSD.
Chair. Motion seconded, any further discussion? Now, roll call, Jake.
Aye.
Travis, Matt.
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And myself.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Want to ask for one quick update?
Sure.
What's two squad cars gonna get equipped?
They go down, uh, Thursday to get decommissioned and then two silver towels will be gone to bright lot on Friday. And when they come back, they'll be up. Yep, that just came through last Thursday, so.
In a couple months.
It has. It's like any other department office in the state of Iowa, they're in the same boat, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
It's, uh, nine twenty, Attorney Dave Wagner, discuss pay increase from shoulder to kidney.
So, we discussed this outline for the last two meetings, and I don't, we're gonna need to discuss it again. Um, obviously, think of last week, for you guys to consider approving it was whether or not my budget could absorb it. Clearly, my overall budget can absorb it, because we said it just set game of money, it's just technically what directly fits into the line items under GB, GS, the breakdown. And I got the okay from the auditor's office on Monday afternoon. That's as the department budget will be fine, uh, with this proposed increase. So, the auditor's office said my budget's gonna be okay, the line items sells. Again, I just make the pitch, a dollar increase is what I'm requesting effective with whatever the next pay period is. I did hear some comments after the meeting that, you know, we set the precedent, we're gonna have all sorts of department heads up here every month asking for additional money. And I just responded to that by stating, one, um, you've kinda already set the precedent, because you've already paid an employee, current employee, more money for picking up extra work during the fiscal year. And not only that, you've also given a current employee a double digit raise when a new employee came in to do the exact same job. Um, so you kinda already set the precedent on that as far as raising mid-term. The other side of that coin is, I would expect, maybe I'm incorrect, but I would expect that if another department that came up here and said, hey, we're gonna cut a full-time employee, or we're gonna cut a part-time employee, and we're gonna give back, you know, ninety-five percent of that money and only reallocate five percent to our current employees, that would be a win for everybody. Uh, that's about what this amounts to, we're saving roughly forty-three, forty-four thousand dollars. And the dollar increase with the additional benefits is roughly twenty-one hundred bucks out of the budget. So, we basically, uh, give them that ninety-five percent of those savings, and this would be a reallocation of just about five percent of those savings, which continues to occur every day. So, I certainly support it, um, when we request it from the board.
When are you gonna ask for your increase?
I don't think legally I can get mine until July one of next year. So, I think we'll see how this goes over the next six to nine months. And then when it comes to budget season, we'll see where everybody's at. I don't know what will be going on statewide at that point, how your budgets will look, how other departments, or if, you know, I voluntarily did it, but other departments are gonna be told they're gonna have to do it. I can only, I, I would think all that'll be on the table once you guys start working on next year's issues.
Just to clarify, your general monthly budget won't take it, but the service area will.
Correct, it'll be a few dollars short when the auditor's office says this overall service area can absorb it. And obviously, my overall budget can absorb it, it's just, uh, it's not a budgeting issue from my office's perspective, it's a budgeting issue from the auditor's office.
Yeah, and we let's fix the service area.
I know you're being cheap. I guess if the board does do another budget amendment, I don't think the private owner would.
They're okay, they don't own the service area.
But maybe fix the budget. Just so we don't get wrote up on his budget going under in GS. Only if we need to do another one.
Going under, or do it's not even?
So, his GS would be a negative number. For his, his budget will be a negative in GS.
Flawed, correct.
So, he would, he's protected by two or three requirements, general service area. So, which of those departments will take care of it? My head specific budget will be a negative number under GS.
I agree that we already have set a precedence with giving certain departments raises more than once. I'd say, stated, um, when's the next payroll would start?
Monday. So. Right?
He's a therapist, so yeah, the night.
I'll move on, give him the shepherd's money clerk slash paralegal in the chair's office, dollar an hour effective September.
Second. Motion seconded, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close.
Thank you, guys, we'll try to continue to be good stewards of the taxpayers. Uh, shifting gears, adding opioid programming, uh, I know I was kind of de facto placed in charge of this ad hoc committee, or whatever you wanna call it. Um, but our plan was to train the schools and get a trainer up here, if you recall that, from Florida to train everybody. And train some folks from pathways, uh, I had my quarterly meeting like I always do, I recorded the sheriff's office, all the deputies last week. And, uh, it's just not gonna work schedule-wise for them despite the available funding for overtime pay. And I think Ryan kinda touched on it with, with Nashville, how they're gonna try and get them into schools for an SRO and model on a structured basis, just on a has need and has available basis. I think the program they're looking at is ten straight weeks. Their schedules obviously flip flop every week, they're on some days, they're off. And I just think their staffing is too thin to commit to that much of a time commitment, that's what I was told. So, I said I would pass that on the board, board want to take that up with him, that's your call. Um, but it doesn't sound like they're on board, are able to fully commit to that program at this point. Uh, so if that's the case, then we're kinda back to the drawing board with those types of money. I know I don't think my office has a use for it. I know if you turn your channels on, I will press Sunday morning and talk about the state's money and how the state's money has been held up for two years. And the legislature still doesn't know if the AG's office should get the line share a part of it, or should all be from DHHS. So, I don't know what the state's gonna do on the third chunk of the money, I think the county's got half, and the state kept half, is my understanding. Um, I know there's been some ideas across the state, drug courts, one of the things that my office has been involved with in District Three, they started a drug court program. I've not heard any interest for that in our area yet. But I don't know who should be taking the lead on this, I don't know if it's a public health issue, that seems like the most logical. I don't know that my office, uh, I'm happy to help out or do what I can, but I don't know that my office should be leading the, leading the charge on how we're gonna shoot at this one. That's how I have to.
Cause I know, I know we talked at six county meeting once, about other counties trying to hire somebody for like the region, any updates on that? Anybody ever?
Yeah, when is she, uh, had wanted, had thrown up the idea of all six counties cool and everybody hired somebody to, uh, to do that. But I know at the last six county meeting, it wasn't brought up, the last fall, it was brought up, so I don't know. Nobody seemed to be real fit for each other, or your county, no change for our county.
Our next one's coming up, right?
Yeah, it's just a week or two.
Nineteen. Maybe add that to that agenda. Cause it seems like the money's coming in and now county is need expended. I mean, otherwise, it just sits there. What is it now, it's over a hundred? With there is a hundred and six thousand, just got a deposit of fifteen thousand. So, there's a need out there, but I think that's whoever the money came from lost it, there's so much tech restriction on it.
Brian? And I, I would encourage you guys to speak with your colleagues, um, of whatever forms you can, to try to find, maybe there's some sharing agreements. I know we have our county attorney conference in, uh, late November, three before Thanksgiving, so I certainly will reach out to my local colleagues then to see if there's any interest. The only thing I can think of from our office would be a drug court program. There's already one in Black Pop County, so we're not fully reinventing the wheel like some other districts are. But that requires a lot more than just my office being on board, that requires a judge that's gonna be dedicated to information officer, there's a lot more. Players and athletes simply just saying, we're on board and we have the money for it. Um, so, I think that's perhaps more of a long-term or long shot type deal. And I don't know what Lisa's involved with this, and I don't know if Sheila spent a couple seven hours, I don't know how involved Lisa can or could be for her department, she was saying. But that's the update I have, so I'll put the file back on the floor and it'll be there until someone tells me something different, like.
Was the pathways willing to do it though? Did you want like train?
They were, yes, but they want law enforcement to team teach it.
Teach it.
In fact, we were gonna pay to train some of their folks, so they were gonna tag along after paid session, yes.
Nine thirty, EMS Director Joel Knutson, department update.
Morning, um, so it's been a few weeks since I've been up here, um, kinda hit the high notes of what we've been doing lately. Call volume wise, uh, finished out the month of August with seventy-one calls. Um, that is down just a touch from July, July was super busy, we went well over eighty-five, so. Just seeing increased requests from Floyd County and Sumner to help them out with transfers, which is again, is a good thing, it, uh, helps us with the revenue side. Travis, you had asked a few weeks ago about mileage on our trucks. Medic one's at roughly forty thousand, give or take a little bit. Medic two is at thirty-one thousand and medic three is at twelve thousand, so.
How long we want to run?
What's that?
How long you want to?
Train them. If they hold up, well, I mean, if they hold up well.
How many miles roughly?
Hundred and fifty, hundred and seventy, yeah, I mean, if they're holding up, like, you'll reach a point where they start nickel and diming you. You know, so then at that point, we probably need to, to start looking at that, but I believe we're, we're a few years away from that. So far, they've all been running well, so, no, no, no real issues. Six four program, um, I'm going to the high school tomorrow to meet with the, um, meet with a couple different classes of, uh, like their anatomy classes, who are a little bit more focused towards healthcare. Just to kinda talk to them about what we do and what we're, what we're doing this winter, hosting an EMT class here, uh, through the college, through our ICC. Um, and, uh, I think that would be a good fit for a lot of these students, so we've been meeting in the morning and meeting in the afternoon with them guys. Uh, so hopefully we gain some interest out of that, um, talking to the crew chief on Nashville, I believe there's a few people. Talking to the crew chief out in Nashville, I believe there's a few people out there that are interested. Got a handful in New Hampton. Again, we'll kind of do it like we did the last one, take a straw poll of where everybody lives and try to use a central location if that works. Ionia worked great last time at their fire station, like, not opposed to doing that again, worked a little off, so.
But their old or the new one, right?
The new one, yeah. Yeah, they were super accommodating. It was absolutely awesome over there, so can't thank them enough for that. Carly is doing very well. She'll be finishing up paramedic school here late fall. Kind of the thought process, what her and I talked about, is we will leave her in her position as an EMT, practicing as a medic, and then that will allow a paramedic to pick up with her for probably six months while she orientates, becomes comfortable in her skills, and then sometimes towards spring, we'll end up opening the EMT side of what was her position. She's been doing clinicals at hospitals, she's doing ride timing with us, she's down to like eleven contacts, I think she said, for ALS assessments, so she's, she's been absolutely knocking it out of the park with having newborns, so. It's, it's gonna be a good thing for us, for the service in here as well, so. Middle of last month, I went to a billing conference down in Des Moines. Discussed a ton of stuff that was put on by, by a firm out of Washington that specializes in EMS litigation and billing. I learned a ton. It was, it was absolutely spectacular. I don't know that I'll go again next year, but I definitely will send somebody from our department. It was, the knowledge down there was unbelievable. One thing that they did talk about towards the end of the conference was the GEMT. And we've discussed that up here a little bit before. It's, for those who aren't familiar, it's an additional payment for our Medicaid patients. Running some basic math, running just kind of what we're guessing where everything's at, it could result in another hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of revenue for our department, which would be awesome. There are a few caveats to it. I'm actually starting the process currently, so the way it kind of works is you give the state your financials for the past fiscal year, they plug it into a formula, they figure out the deficiency of what it's taking to run that call, and then they pay you the additional on top of what you're getting from Medicaid. There are a few nuances with it though, that I'm still trying to wrap my head around. But the way it was discussed down there is, in order to trigger that payment from the feds, from the federal government, you have to put up a percentage towards that payment, which you get back. So the way it was kind of discussed is typically a service will have to put up thirty-three percent of what they're going to recruit. And every month, you write a check to Iowa HHS for them to send on, send on to the federal government to trigger that payment. I asked why they do that. Nobody could really come up with a good answer other than, just to make it confusing. I don't, I don't know. Something about, they want all shareholders to be involved in the process. I said, but we're getting the money back. They said, yeah, you'll get, every dollar you put towards it, you get back, but just beware for budgeting concerns, you will have to budget the money of what you're anticipating to send them every month, so. PCC has been great, our billing company, they're getting me all of the data on all of our Medicare, Medicaid runs. Looking through the paperwork, looking through the spreadsheets from the state. It's, it's a little bit confusing. So wages, because we're not fire-based, that makes it way easier because then all of our wages are eligible as for this reimbursement. Fuel, because we don't run fire trucks, again, all eligible. But there are some supplies, there are some other operating costs that aren't, and it's trying to figure out which ones are which. So the collection period is from August till November. As soon as I get all of the information from PCC, I'm gonna talk to a group called Public Consulting Group. They help set these up. I don't know anything more as far as what they charge, what, you know, what their share is, so on and so forth. But I think for the first year, it would probably be money well spent to make sure we do it right, till we know what we're doing, and then maybe go on from there, and then we can do it on our own in the subsequent years. So every year from November till, or from August till November, you submit the paperwork, and then sometime in March, they tell you what you're gonna get paid, and then the next fiscal year, the payments start, so. There's a lot of services that have taken advantage of it, and they've had some, some pretty good success with it, so. Hopefully that continues to roll. I'll keep you guys informed when I know more.
Why would we need to start questioning for that, or what are they?
It would be next fiscal year. So we were originally led to believe that it was, or maybe it was my understanding, that you had to be in your third year of operation. Because we've got a full fiscal year under our, under our belt, that's they can base that data off of. So we're actually gonna be ending up collecting about half a year or so early from what we thought we were, which is good. Semi-annual meetings, so with the cities, I know part of the twenty-eighty says that we meet yearly. Do we want to do it every six months? We certainly can. I know there was some talk of that. Could we, as a group, decide, you know, the month following, say February and August, we meet on the third Wednesday or something? Just so we can get that penciled out, as in, we know when that meeting's gonna be, and we can kind of let the cities know? Is that something that everybody has some interest in, just setting a date so we know when it is?
I haven't talked to any cities, but I think it would be good to over-communicate that, you know, under the game. And if they don't want to show up, then that would kind of be a sign that they weren't interested.
Well, and truthfully, I, I, truthfully, I do the same thing with our monthly EMS meetings, right? Like, if you don't want to show up, that's fine, but then don't complain that you didn't get the information. So we could treat this the same way as far as I'm concerned. I, I would probably not want to do it any sooner than three weeks after, like, the end of the fiscal year, or it would just be nice to get a little bit of time to get our run put together and get our financials together, so. Just don't, don't partner them too close.
So what if you do February first week? What's this? When do we have to? Once calendar year?
Once the calendar year is my understanding.
I think I just said numbers.
Yeah.
I think we require a provided.
Correct.
By, I'm sure it could just be by a letter actually of, here's the ins and outs, and I, it was off the document discussion and expectation that they would be providing updates when they requested it and more frequently perhaps.
Correct.
Had it on the disposal, actual option?
I don't think it would hurt anything to just show her where you were at. So do we want to, do we want to have one this month, I guess? Do we, this, we're post fiscal year. Do we want to have one now and one again in February, and then next year, try to do it earlier in August?
I don't think it would hurt to just have a six-month calendar year. And just stop it at June there. It's my thought. And then we'd be caught up and go forward in February.
And I think one of the discussion points too, when the July announcement came out about the way the, the fee was that perhaps we provide a little more clarification and more data in that letter to them because that stirred issues with what that actually meant.
Yeah, cause the profit is on.
Right, when they say that we have X amount of money, but that doesn't solve a whole issue, so maybe we need to or some needs to communicate that a little better. Try to, if possible.
Yeah, I think we should have one this month, too. I'm gonna go back to February, August.
Okay.
That gives you a month to do calendar year and fiscal year.
Right.
So you want to do it in September?
The week of the sixteen would work better than the week of the ninth for me, that I can rearrange some stuff with me, too.
September eighteenth.
That'll be good.
Have you reserved a PCC department company about seven, three payments, seven months?
Yeah, you have three invoices at once. I did, I said, it makes me look real foolish, like I've been, because those invoices are dated on when they're sent. And I said, it looks like I've been holding on to this invoice for three months. Yeah, I did.
So is this gonna be at the evening and noon?
I would say six o'clock. If that's acceptable. At the Public Services, yeah, CFP.
Six thirty, do you want six thirty?
Six thirty.
Is everybody else there?
Maybe pull in more time if they were, if we're somewhere.
So a question around this topic, and I don't, no, I won't be there, but I don't know how detailed your presentation is gonna be, but is there a way to either, or both, A, send that presentation to every clerk of, city clerk that's a member of this, so they at least have something on file in their community in case someone wants to come forward? And/or B, put it on our website or make a copy available here for, because this is gonna be the problem. Four of the six will show up, or three of the six, or maybe all six, and the other two are gonna be confused and we're gonna get misinformation out there. So the easiest way to get rid of misinformation is to get it out there for everyone that are considering. So if we send a copy of, I mean, maybe you can just do a truncated version of it, and send it to the clerks, and put it somewhere where John Doe can come up and say, okay, I heard X, Y, and Z, I want the, here's the full story. That's what I'm trying to do.
Yeah, so what I did last at the time, when we did one at the year mark, so we did, we've done two now. We did one at the six month, and we did one at the year, since going into service. What I did at the year one was even a PowerPoint presentation with all of the financials included. Some community outreach stuff we've done, power trucks are set up, kind of that. But I just emailed that presentation to all of the cities, including the ones over there, because then they could take it back and show it to their city councils over meetings. If we want to do that, that's fine. If you want more of a financial statement, so to speak, we can do that too, entirely. Entirely, I guess, what they want to, if they're interested in.
I agree with you.
The more information can be out, the less consistent the issues are.
Will you send that letter out, sheet letter, or will I send that out?
For the cities, yeah.
On the eighteenth, year off as well.
We'll do it at six then?
Are you just gonna tell me?
Six thirty. Six thirty was fine. So then as long as around the topic, do we want to set the neck, I mean, set the meetings going forward, just saying, you know, every February, the, say, second Wednesday in February, and the second Wednesday in, in August?
And it's just information only? Just so it covers calendar year, fiscal year?
I'll make, just a time later, I'll make a motion to.
We give it a department update?
Hey?
Pardon?
Can I, can we set a motion or something to have these meetings under department update, or would we need to be more strict?
So it's in the minutes?
Yeah, you can, you can set a, set a semi-annual, depart, ambulance department update meeting for the public and the cities that are involved at X, Y, Z day.
I'll move on that for the second Wednesday of February in August.
Six.
Uh, six thirty, excuse me.
Motion seconded, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye, 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 couse.
And the last thing that I had then was, I know Roman comes up here every other week. Do you want me up here once a month with just a monthly department update? Like I said, I know it has been a few weeks since I've been up here. Is that something you guys are interested in, or do we just do it as an, as needed basis?
I think we might just once a month. Another two.
Say the third, third Monday of the month?
Whatever, sure, sure.
Are you also here with that?
Yeah. Um, two questions. Have we done anything on late payments yet? Have we received any late payments?
We have not, nope. So as you can imagine, that's quite a process, right? Like, they go through a whole list of things and researching and I do too. But yeah, we're, we're, we've submitted now, I think eighteen accounts. And so that's, they're in process. I've got a meeting with them later this afternoon to kind of do an overview and track up how things are coming home.
And then my other question is, how's the association working with the five open C three?
It's in process. That's as far as we've gotten with it, but that is, that is, it kind of took a back burner a little bit with all of everything going on, but it's still in process. Out of sight, but not forgotten.
When we had that open house, is the contractor gonna fix a thing on board, at least cover up the back?
You touched on it. Yeah, so, they were there the other day. I can't think of anything else. You're, you're talking just the gap room?
The gap room.
Yep, they put trim around it. Yeah, otherwise, status, status as usual, everything's gonna work, you know, so. It was, it was a very good turnout for the open house. I guess just on a, yeah, we've been, Nashville had their Labor Day big for fair this weekend, and given as backup as they needed.
Maybe something I'm gonna add there, bring up, because winter's coming, this is probably, have you worked with somebody, a contractor, or Dave Gordon to your move?
No. Dave did it last year, they.
I mean, just what happened, like, two o'clock in the morning?
Yeah, yeah, for sure. So our crews stay pretty suit with that, and, and if it needs to be addressed, it's addressed.
Something for down-hold or get out?
Was under the under compression that your staff did a lot of that last year, or no?
They did some of it, they helped, yeah, they helped. I wouldn't say a lot of it, but depending on who it was, you know, it was Brandon or myself, or some of the other guys were pretty good about pitching in and getting it done, so. It worked, it worked very well. I'd like to stay with the same programs, so to speak, because it hurts.
Somebody else getting in for Joel?
Thanks, guys.
I'll move to discuss board members for the twenty-eighty agreement between Chickasaw County Conservation Board County, Chickasaw and the city of Nashville, but Chickasaw Cedar Lake Council.
Yeah, I was wondering, under four C, it says council members shall not be paid for their services, but shall be reimbursed for actual necessary expenses incurred and carried out through fees. So would this twenty-eighty pay for mileage and stuff, or would that just be on the city, on the?
You couldn't be here.
Whatever party, is it just the county?
I think that's the same language, it's our supervising duties. That we only receive revenue except for mileage expense.
Ready?
I would, yeah.
That's where that language comes from. And in the past, when I served CSS, we didn't turn it into the county, we turned it into that agency, but this agency, do they hold on to money? I think this is a council for, uh, information.
No longer. Sixty access to contractors, any private firm, engineering, architect, consultant, and other experts, as a council gains necessary, to carry out the purposes of this agreement. So is the county on book for those contracts?
The council would be. Cause G, six G, to make any appropriation within the budget.
So is that less liable to go back on if, there was some issue with the contractor? Or they felt that they didn't do good enough job or something like that? Does that make sense? Because that opens up the question of, does this twenty eighty have insurance? Not ability insurance, or is Hardland know that we're on this, or who's, who's covering our tail if something goes south?
Any, any twenty eighty, man, just like the twenty eighty we just signed this morning. You know, it's hard to know that we'd be at school now?
Maybe they should.
Well, no, I agree. I agree, we signed a lot of twenty eights. Kind of get something with the council and visit. And then for the meeting.
I think we're very, we're probably with this, but how we should make sure. For coverage.
I have a question. You can do it, Jake.
Go ahead. Jake, just made a comment about receiving actual expense, which is mileage. But on the Floyd Mitchell, uh, board, you're collecting mileage and meeting expense, aren't you?
Yes.
Of that order.
That's a good question, brought up to the county attorney.
I think that, and there's a, there has been a, uh, decision made on that. This, not to accept it and turn it over to the county. Is that true or not true?
I don't know, I have really from the, one of the Hardland attorney's that says because it's a twenty eighty agreement, um, and non, non-governmental, that it, I can receive that money.
All right, don't overreact. So my understanding was we were keeping mileage, because, well, we were not keeping meeting mileage, but that's the difference to me, if you change it, I don't know.
And that's what's been done, because Zoel was the one that was taking the money, and they decided that he can take his mileage, but he couldn't take his meeting expense. There's no clarification on that. So when did that be possible, to get the clarification?
I could probably have the, uh, uh, papers I have from the Hardland attorneys at the next meeting.
So what, again, I'm taking notes here, so I'll look into this, but what, are other committees paying people beyond committees, or is it just the landfill, the landfill?
Hardland pays, uh, just two officers, the, the president and the treasurer.
But not regular committee?
Not regular, trust me, it's no, no, it's not where I own.
So the only one that issues the landfill?
How long ago did you question it, Jake?
Six months ago.
At least.
So my understanding right under F, that conservation is supposed to fund raise?
Something like that.
Uh, sorry, uh, the under five. Should be on this third page that I have. Uh, in what in purposes of the performance by the council, is the delegation of authority to the Chickasaw County Conservation Board to solicit funds from the Recreation Tourism Grant Program funded by the Iowa Lottery and administered by the Iowa Carpet and亻筑 Resources.
So, I mean, yeah, I'm just kind of coming in, that's obviously not why I came up here this morning, but, um, so if I recall, and I can go back and look, but I looked at the conservation board minutes from that time, that was basically, I believe, my opinion why, conservation, the main reason they got involved, again, from my interpretation of reading the minutes, is because there were certain grant items and things that they were eligible for, that I believe probably the city and the county and so forth were not able to access or go after those funds. So that's my interpretation of why conservation, where obviously, um, the whole Cedar River, um, area adds to conservation, what provides, so like, there was probably some vested value there, as far as that goes as, as well. But I think that was probably the main reason conservation for all the boards, to try to solicit some of those funds that they would, you know, potentially be available or, uh, available to apply for that potentially the other organizations were not. Again, that's my interpretation, how the board minutes read.
So this twenty eighty, yeah. I said, so, uh, I just wanted to clarify that conservation is supposed to potentially solicit funds from these. Who is the last supervisor that went playing in this, is anybody?
I don't know who it was, ninety-eight. Is it sign term, or what's that?
It says, uh, board log.
So under number seven financing and budget, the numbers for time after this agreement is completed annually thereafter, on November fourth, June thirtieth, each year, the council shall, the parents submit to the city, board and county, a budget proposed receipts, and expenditures. That's never been done. So, that didn't happen, is it even a valid agreement?
And again, I can go back and look, but I looked a little bit further, I mean, I spent, I didn't know what it was, in fact, I spent a while now, but I spent a fair amount of time looking in this, and I couldn't even find where the conservation board had appointed anybody, so I don't know if it's, you know. And again, I'll go dig in some more if I need to, but I couldn't even find where it looked like they even appointed anybody in this council, so I don't know if it, anything even happened beyond the signatures there. Can anybody show minutes or meeting or anything, I, I don't know, that's, this is my question as well, so I.
We're ten o'clock, we'll have to come back to this. Then I have open bids for cash rental lease of Gilmore Woxie Access Farm Ground and the county farm with possible action.
Before we opened that day, there was a, an individual that came in here at about eight fifty. Thought she could submit her bid yet this morning. I believe they only got one bid for Gilmore Woxie. Is that correct? So did you hear? Someone lost a bid late? So we only got one bid? I'll just look at this one, and maybe it's up to. I don't.
Yeah.
Everyone, please sign in. Sorry.
The issue is gonna be if you open the bid that was submitted properly, then you're spoiling basically.
That's a nice question.
But I mean, everyone got their chance to increase the bid, that did provide a bid, so I mean, it's not like it's a one-time deal. Uh, that someone knows, like, on a copy machine, or you're giving someone an opportunity to re-bid on a copy machine a second time around, once you guys are all open. I think that's up to you guys, I guess my recommendation would be you open the bid, that you receive, you properly receive a bid, and then decide what you want to do from there. If you think it's a acceptable bid, then accept it, if you wanna reject it, it's not the process over again, and you do start, if you think it's too rough, you're, uh.
Oh, it's good.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I guess, I, 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 not, not just like another bid, and then if you wanna refuse, so.
I mean, at that point, we can compare whoever they have now, which is not as much as we have now, but we could say.
You see, open bid?
Yeah.
All right?
Yeah.
Jake?
Yeah. I don't keep, pardon this sort of stuff, but according to hack ass, it's not just by January first.
It's always nice to do it in September, October, it's just so far to meet there, but it's, if you're out, it's next year's fun. Really runs through the spring, so, yeah. So, you was just gonna come with, yeah. He's opened a bid for Gilmore Woxie, we only received one by the deadline on Friday.
Bid for the Woxie Access Ground is, uh, sixty dollars an acre from Bruce Lansky, Lansky?
Lansky, gee.
That's gee.
Is it fifty dollars now?
It's been grass the last three years, or alfalfa, um, and the new proposal date, we added the language of the chat, and wanted our county conservation director to leave, was it five percent? How much acres have to stand for a couple, a little plot?
We agree, um, with the things, two, two dollars.
Twenty percent.
Can we open the other ones, this, uh, from the farm ground? See where those come in, how those are comparable, I don't know, this farm ground, this farm ground go for more now than it may be before, just to like, I understand it's two different periods, it's two different properties.
You just wanna put those on the table and look at the county farm? Remember, we had a minimum bid of two hundred bucks for the county farm.
Yeah. I was just curious how much over?
Oh, it's gonna be, uh, I don't know, but it's gonna be in the two hundreds, three hundreds.
We're getting three hundred and fifty five.
Three sixty.
Three sixty, currently. I don't care, it's just we have this on the table, but we have.
Because I don't really do it this long time, yeah.
I agree, that'd be fine.
Okay.
So, and again, just, just from the conservation standpoint, conservation board, our goal is not to make, to profit a ton of money off of this parcel, right? I mean, our goal was to provide quality food plot, um, you know, for the public and the wildlife to, to use there, so, I mean, we're, obviously, price isn't something that, you know, we're concerned about at this point in time, it was just trying to take some workload off of, off of our staff, and still get the same shows, we're probably on the best, because farmers in the area have a lot better growing corn than we are in the conservation department, or, or, so, um, yeah, so that's not really a consideration for us at this point in time, I mean, if that means anything to you guys, so.
Well, I make a motion to rehearse, I make a motion to, uh, move forward with the Gilmore Woxie property at sixty dollars an acre with Bruce Lansky. Sorry.
Motion, seconded, any further discussion, comments?
Just so the record's clear, I misspoke, it is two acres on the west side, it's twenty percent.
Uh, roll call, Matt?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
And it's all five. So open up the county farm bids, we received seven bids for the county farm.
You would explain why you wanna do this? So we're all in the same picture.
Are you, well, it's more, more useful than I have it.
We got seven?
Yes.
So, to be entered into the auction, then, um, you gotta be over the two hundred bucks, which I hope all seven are. Otherwise, those would be rejected, if they're not. And then we'll move into the second round, if you want a bid higher than the highest bid. And I don't know if we ever decided if it's gonna be increments of five bucks, or ten bucks, or, I guess we haven't decided that, but I don't wanna see a dollar here and there. You could be here all day.
I'd say I'd been over twenty.
Per time? Oof.
Yeah.
And that's high.
It is high.
Yeah, I'd say five.
I'd say five bucks, that's where I was gonna.
You guys all do this, huh?
So I would say open all seven over the chair, and then, uh, we're asking all seven if they wanna rebid. Um, and in the past, sometimes, some people don't wanna go higher than the highest bid, so they're pretty much done. Uh, but we've got a notepad, a box, you can go think about it for a couple minutes, and, uh, well, the chair will look at the rebids then and see where we go from there.
Last time you did like an auction type setting?
We've done that too. Yeah.
I guess next, sign it with all seven want to rebid.
Yes. It's up to you, man, it's up to you, but that's what you did last time, that's all, I, I don't know, that's what you did last time.
So I guess there's been a question, we don't know where this piece of ground is, it's by the Heritage Center, South on Lynn, um, just been farmed by management for the last six years, so.
Five or six?
How many acres again?
Oh, it's roughly.
Sixty.
Sixty.
Sixty, right.
First bid is from, uh, Bruce Lansky for two hundred and fifty acre.
Two five zero.
Yep. Next one is from Joshua Dunn for two sixty-five per acre. Next bid is Matt Wolfhard for two twenty-five acre. Next one is Adam Place. And it'd be three hundred and thirty dollars per acre. This is Bruce, for Bryce, Warren Key. And two eighty-one per kilable acre. Pavrazankey, two, two fifty-five. Parisaki, two, two fifty-five per acre. James Davis is the last one and it is two hundred and fifty per acre. Adam Place has a high bid of three thirty.
So I guess so, it's up to you guys, these eyes, so.
Who's not interested?
Well, yeah, if you feel one way, you could. Or you just wanna put your piece big because they're, could all raise back up above three fifty. So that's higher than three thirty-five. Up to what we get.
Anybody want to raise, is it?
Yeah, I'll raise my three thirty-five.
Is that we won't do that way or?
You guys have to. The other thing would be a paper trail.
Do you wanna put it in there, sign it? And then just hand it to us, would that work?
Did you know your name too? So we all understand this is a three-year lease. Who's that?
Josh Dunn.
And you're going up to three thirty-five?
What's up?
You're going at three thirty-five?
So is that how you guys are gonna do it, are you guys gonna open the room or what's the?
Yeah, like how are we doing?
Jesus, we're done both ways. See you.
That's what I, that's what I would do, that's what we did last time, that way everyone knows where they're at, if you don't want a bid, you don't have to, if you want a bid, just open it up and say, this is what it is.
So you have, you wanna do it this way?
I gotta open bid. Do it like an auction, like you do a farm auction. It's where we're at, if you want to do above it, that's.
Yeah, then we're not coming back by one pound.
That's why we then.
We just open up and we're done.
Well, you have to say your last name too, so I don't worry about your yes.
So I guess that'd be the right way to do it. So is anybody moving over to three thirty-five?
Yeah, high bid ran once, two thirty-five, anybody? I'll go for Davis, three forty. Forty-sixty Davis. Forty-fifty. Three sixty Davis. Three sixty-five. Three seventy Davis. Three eighty.
Josh Dunn.
Three eighty-five Davis. Four hundred.
Who's, who said that?
Nah, you made.
Anybody else? Already done, David? If so, the high bid is four hundred dollars and that will show.
Thank you guys very much.
So David, you're gonna go right up now to the other side?
I know, it's wild.
I'll make a motion to accept the high bid from Terry Farm on the south side. At approximately sixty-four acres total acres to Matthew Bushlock at four hundred dollars. For a three-year contract.
Both inside there? Any further discussion? Matt, roll call, Jake, Travis, Steve, Matt.
Hi.
So if you guys are gonna get a bid on fifty acres now?
We accepted sixty dollars.
Sixty dollars an acre, I didn't know if you guys have received them, but I, I was gonna stand up, I didn't like here.
David will get you the contract.
So last year was three sixty, the last three years now we're going four hundred, and we got almost fifty, we're on sixty. Re-listen. Start a recap for you, but.
Keep the same agenda, I believe. It's a year, like December fifteenth.
Yes, yes, yeah, they, there was a copy of the draft released there, get that one with this one as well.
All right, back to discussing the board members for the twenty-eight year agreement.
Are you gonna have these signed today or?
No.
Okay, all right.
So what happens if one of the three parties decides not to move forward with this, what happens to it?
Good question.
Then I think what it says in there for termination is a government body can terminate withdrawal.
Yeah, I just meant that it's non-employee or? And it's conservation meeting?
So again, we have, I have a meeting tonight, but it's not on my agenda, I mean, I can throw it out there to them, they'll, you know, kind of let them know, I'm not even sure I know where, uh, it's all headed at here. I, I see it on the agenda, you know, a week or two ago and just asked you briefly, but I haven't been watching any of the meetings or anything recently, didn't know where we're at even on that, so are you looking at, reestablishing this board or?
I think it's together, but the council hasn't met in a long time, or if any.
Right, right, like I said, I can't find anything other than that initial agreement in the conservation minutes, I can dig some more if need be, but.
I'll just renew my comments that I made a couple weeks ago, this came up, that this area is thirty-five years old, so if this is something you guys really want to do is to, put a group together to help try and raise money or preserve the lake or advance the lake or whatever you want to do with it, my suggestion is that you, put a group together in twenty twenty-eighty with insurance, um, best supervised that complies with check twenty-eighty, twenty-eighty is not even mentioned in this because I don't think it was in existence thirty-five years ago. Um, but if that's what you guys want to do, and it's not my fault, public policy, but if that's what you really want to do, then suggest that you do it that way. If this board gets back in agreement, the first thing on their agenda, my recommendation is to give it a review in terms of the agreement and clean it up and make it, uh, more compliant with twenty twenty-four as nineteen eighty-eight, so those are just my two cents.
Quick claim date first?
Pardon?
Don't you need the quick claim date first?
Well, this entity is not gonna own it, so I mean, they have no funding, each of the entities, each of the entities, the counties do, decides to give them five hundred dollars in seed money to, promote the dam or whatever they want, they're just an advisory committee with no money that's, in theory, gonna try and get grants. But I'm not sure if grants can go to an intergovernmental agency like this, or if grants go to Nashville, because Nashville owns the dam, those are, those are questions for whatever entity or whoever decides to help off the lake to decide.
But sixty contradicts that because it says contract with any credit firm, engineer, architect, consultant and other experts as the council needs necessary to carry out the purposes of the agreement. This doesn't sound like an advisory council.
Correct, but they have no money as of now, so unless, conservation says we'll throw in twenty, and the county says we'll throw in a hundred, Nashville says we'll throw in a hundred, they, I mean, they have before to do that. But they have no money to do something, to my knowledge. And again, that's why I think either way is appropriate, if you guys want to be involved with that, that's fine. Then get together with Nashville, get together with conservation, what other, other entities want to be a part of this? And let's draw something else, something new that complies with the law and complies with what your wishes and desires are. Or appoint these members and the great question they're gonna have to do is gonna have to redo their agreement to, to tighten it up and to actually comply with the purposes of this, because I think when you read this, this was a contemplation of that being the dam and raising money to fix it, those types of things, that's watering the dam, pun intended. We're on to the next phase here.
But wouldn't you want to clean it up and have the deed to the dam before you appointed this committee? So they know what they're in charge of?
I don't know what, I don't.
They could go back to the word intent, Dave, I'll argue with you all day.
Yeah, and, and in all honesty, Terry, I don't know that this agreement has anything to do with who owns the dam. What, what, what this agreement is, is to try and increase the productivity and increase the value of the area. So I don't think it matters, this agreement, who owns the dam, quite frankly.
Yeah, I, I, and, and just speaking freely here, I, I have a board that I have to answer to that will ultimately make that final decision for me. I don't know that there, again, thirty-five years ago, I think there was maybe some value in having a conservation board established on this agreement to help, incorporate some of that grant funding and some of those outside sources that probably the city municipality wasn't authorized or, you know, didn't qualify for. I don't know that that state stands today, I don't know that there's anything out there that the conservation board needs to be involved in. Now, we would surely write recommendation letters and do whatever we needed to to help the city of Nashville facilitate funding for that project, but I don't know that, there's a reason for us to be involved, uh, we will be if need be, right? I mean, that, this is what we're here for, conservation practices. And, and I would just throw out the, the comment, I don't know if there's anything, any value to this, David, but, I mean, if this is what, you know, if we want to clean this up, let's just appoint a couple of members and let's gavel in and let's just, disassemble or whatever this organization, gavel off, move on, we've got closed paper trail and, city of Nashville can move on, and if they want to move forward, then they can come, we can do what David wants to do, but, if that's, I mean, that would be my two cents without, you know, talking to my board, but, uh, that would be what I would add, and then we've got closure on that contract or that, whatever this agreement is, is that, I mean, I don't know if that's what we're after, I don't.
Well, you can get sixty days' notice today or you want to. Your board can decide tonight, just like this board couldn't decide through these, but say, hey, we want to get sixty days' notice, we're out. And then it's done. You're done, but who remembers that, who remembers that? Scott, are you on the U C River watershed?
Yes, I'm the river watershed.
Who's on the Woxey?
I am.
You're on the Little Turkey?
Yeah.
To me, I was a big picture of the dam, I, I think it's the watershed, I think it's property rights above and below the dam. I think our forefathers had a reason to enter this twenty-eighty or intergovernmental agreement with three government agencies. Um, I think new members could come together and maybe make it better, so. I think two members need to be appointed to this intergovernmental agreement. And I think Scott is one of them, just because he's on the city river watershed and supervising that area that serves that watershed area.
Do we know where the city stands? I mean, do, do they want?
Yeah, I had a visit with Mary last week and I kind of shared some of the same concerns that Dave did about, you know, if, if they're gonna move forward this, they need to just restructure the whole thing, Steve had brought up to me last week that, uh, Floyd County should probably be involved with it and that, and I, and it, you know, I think he kind of took that and said, hey, yeah, we need, probably the first thing we're gonna do is restructure the twenty-eighty and, and go from there, so. And to Jake's point, I do think it's probably something in the future with the, with the river, all the watershed areas, and then I think it's, it's probably good to be involved.
Would it make sense for the Iowa Corps of Engineers to be involved in this?
It's water rights, right, it's, we don't have any water districts.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, that's something like if you could reach out to them, I don't know, they, they were involved, involved, involved briefly back in the eighties for some dredging work, but, they really don't have much to do with our dam.
And they will be involved if we do anything.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, whether we want them there or not, they're going to be involved, I mean, you, you're not gonna touch anything on that, flowable water body without Army Corps signing off on it and giving their blessing, whether it's a muscle survey or whatever it's going to be, they're going to, make sure that everything's done properly beforehand, so.
I thought Nashville, I guess, they have an agreement or something with doing some work on the dam, or is that?
Yeah, I think, I, I believe they've accepted a bid from a company, I'm sure.
I'm just concerned there's a lot of loose ends with this, so that's why I made my motion, uh, two weeks ago, August nineteenth. Uh, when Supervisor Ackman offered to the Evans Committee this twenty-eighty, um, this has nothing, as Supervisor Ackman stated, uh, August nineteenth, uh, to not support the boating, fishing, tours, and that has nothing to do with this. Supervisor, as stated before, we don't even know when the last supervisor's that happened, so, to make the comment that, that somebody that votes no doesn't support all those things, I, I find is, um, invalid.
I didn't say you support them, I just asked you, do you support the, the twenty-eighty, that's right on the first page.
Yeah, so it, it came across at least the way it appeared to me that, that people potentially didn't support it, so I just wanted to make that clear that, in my opinion, this has nothing to do with that and, I think it should be disbanded and done, right?
Yeah, the reason I voted against is because it's an outdated agreement, if, if it's the will of the board to go forward with this, we need to have an updated twenty-eighty. Yeah, so this is three, five years old, hasn't been active, huh?
I'm not sure that we shouldn't have more entities involved in, and conservation is going to be, that, that's fine, but.
If that's the desire, then quite frankly, I would recommend that you come out and then, create a group together to form something new.
Only one point? Two members, as it says?
Hopefully, anything that is changed is gonna have to come back to you for approval. So, I mean, either if these six members come into existence, assuming conservation appoints there too, and assuming Nashville decides to coordinate it, which are two assumptions. I would imagine one of the first words in business is gonna be to refine the organizing document, which is gonna come back to you guys, I think, for approval.
Yeah, I just, and whatever court owns that dam, oh, again, I know this is the big, have we got a sign on this agreement, because I mean, the conservation board now has say in what goes on with the dam that we don't own? What do I mean?
Do you mean that conservation doesn't own?
Yeah, conservation doesn't own, I mean, I think we're one, one of the entities that we're free and clear, nobody's pointed it at us that we own it at this point, at least, I'm what I, hopefully, we're still on that equation, um, yeah. And then are you going with the same contract, if, if that's the case, then I would maybe ask David if he could draft up, or, do you have something, if my board chooses to get out of it, sixty day notice, just?
It's, you know, it's, we serve it upon us, we serve it upon the city of Nashville, that is, and these, that are part of it. State the purpose for which this was created thirty-five years ago, as far as the purpose of your agreement. Cleanest way is just to start with. That's my, that's my recommendation, to you guys.
I would, from, from my perspective, I think you might want to get some things cleaned up before you move forward. But that's my comment. There's a lot of loose ends you need to get cleaned up.
At least on the table.
Does anybody else want to volunteer to be out there? If you're informed of all your concerns, do you want to be part of it so you can help change it?
Actually, it's a good idea. Sure.
Is it all right if we appoint Matt and myself to? Concerned with questions with that?
Oh, no, not appoint this. I'm interested in helping draft something on, but I no. But I'm not interested in being in front of this store while I. We want to sit down and look at every document. That's a different story.
What's the next step with Nashville? What's the step, next step with Nashville to members?
I, I, you don't know for sure. The mayor, I believe, was going to try and have something on the agenda for tonight, but I had not looked at their agenda to see if it was on there. I mean, I just, we want, we can wait till after their meeting to see if they appointed anybody or not and then make a decision if we want to take that route or.
Yeah, and, and then keep me informed, I guess, if they do or don't or whatever. I mean, like I said, I don't have it on my agenda for tonight. So there will be no discussion on it, obviously, but if I need to have a special meeting or if waiting a month is acceptable for an answer from the board, conservation board, or a client you want, would like me to pursue.
To see if it was on their agenda. Dude, I see them very clearly. All right, so we're going to take no action on that today then? Are you all right then? Many a segment updates.
I had a Nazi-style RCV on twenty-nine. Really short beam. Basically, there was six oils there. Basically one over the water. There's a few things, but every odd has a few things.
Did you have a corner?
Six.
Anybody else have any previous assignment updates? Discuss future agenda items?
Is your TIF committee meeting coming back to us?
What, we're supposed to have another meeting this week currently?
I think there's a meeting this week, but yeah, I guess it was, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I got that plan written to that. It's more a chance, so.
Because I believe I went up to Jason, the volunteer, he was cutting up, so one phrase is important.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
She's old, second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.